Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. City staff, invited guests and friends. My colleagues on council and everyone on the dais. I want to welcome you to the city council meeting for April 23rd, 2024. And before we move on with our program, I see red in the audience, or crimson, I think the color is, if it would be appropriate. So on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I want to acknowledge and welcome the ladies of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Thank you, ladies, for your presence.[53.87][53.87](APPLAUSE). And now, I will turn the meeting over for welcome to one of our esteemed members of that great organization, Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. And my colleagues always say that when they see me with the red on, they know something good to happen, so it's a good day. Our Portsmouth Alumni Chapter, where I have been a member for 28 years, and we're celebrating 80 years of good service in our community, providing voter registration, and restoration of rights, and advocacy for education, and international awareness, and all of those good things that are in our five-point thrust, which you will hear our chapter president speak about later. But I would like to acknowledge our chapter president, Lisa Downey Hood, Barbara Lisa Downey Hood, if she would stand at this time.[108.25][108.25](APPLAUSE). And also our vice president, our first vice president, Swan Zeta Williams.[117.42][117.42](APPLAUSE). And our second vice president, Nakia Gray.[123.81][123.81](APPLAUSE). We have a lot of officers, and a lot of our members here in Portsmouth Alumni Chapter serves on our boards and commissions, because that is our thrust. That is what we, as women and members of Delta Sigma Theta do. We get engaged in our community. So any of the members serving on boards and commissions, if you are standing now as well.
Where are you at, Michelle?
Boards and commissions, yes.[149.69][149.69](APPLAUSE). All right. Thank you all for being here, and we'll move back on with the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I would now ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by our pledge of allegiance.[166.01][166.01](MUTTERING) Thank you. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you once again, and I would ask that all of my colleagues, please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of city council are present.
We do have a minutes of a call meeting on April 19th, excuse me, April 9th, 2024, and a regular call meeting on April 9th, 2024. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
I would ask that my colleagues, please vote electronically.
The minutes have been adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. And I would like to take a moment to introduce two very important people up here on the dais. Our newest member of Team Portsmouth and the Portsmouth family, city manager Stephen And tonight, we have our deputy city clerk, Ms. Anita Sharad.[259.52][259.52](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Thank you very much. And Ms. Sharad, would you please read our speaker statement at this time?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving right along, we're now at the agenda item, public hearings, item 24-105. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item at this time?
Public hearing to solicit citizen comments on the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. You are not required to have signed up to come and speak on this public hearing item. However, if you will come forward and speak on this item, you will have five minutes. Also, we need you to state your name and address. The last thing I'll say is, when you come to speak on a public hearing item, you must speak to the item in question. And if you venture off in some other area, then I'm going to have to bring you back to the point of the item that is on the agenda, okay? So this public hearing is open. Is there anyone who wishes to come to speak on this public hearing item? Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed.[399.56][399.56](MUTTERING). And Madam Clerk, would you please read item 24-106, item A, the public hearing we are considering at this time?
Public hearing to consider the annual operating budget for FY 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. You're not required to have signed up to come and speak on this public hearing item. If you come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed.[434.28][434.28](MUTTERING). Madam Clerk, item B, would you please read the public hearing item we're considering at this time?
Public hearing on the Recommended 2025-2029 Capital Improvement Program.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, you're not required to have signed up. You can come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, then this public hearing item is closed.[467.13][467.13](MUTTERING). Madam Clerk, would you please read item C, the public hearing that we're proposing at this time?
Public hearing on proposed changes to rates and levies for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
This public hearing is open at this time. If you wish to come and speak on these, this particular item, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed.[501.38][501.38](MUTTERING). That concludes our public hearing items for this evening. We have now moved on to the agenda, city manager's report. And Mr. Carter, are you ready, sir?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 24-107. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the item, the ordinance that we are considering at this time?
Ordinance accepting Community Mental Health Services Block Grant funding in the amount of $15,107 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Healthcare and Developmental Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for the delivery of services to individuals recovering from mental health, substance abuse, and co-occurring disorders.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, or, excuse me, colleagues on council, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-108. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering at this time?
Ordinance amending, ordinance 2024-29, for the purpose of confirming that the $467,257 appropriated by said ordinance shall be used by the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the Operation Ceasefire Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Is anyone on staff who can speak to this item?
Mr. Carter, sir, if you would please ask a staff member to come and speak to this item?
Do we have a staff member available to speak on this item at this time?
Let me see. Hold on.
Seeing none, sir, if you go ahead with your question, we'll get some answers.
Well, my question was to enlighten the public on what this money is going to be used for, and where it came from, and why it was a little late getting there.[665.66][665.66](MUTTERING). Is there anyone that has any history? I'll yield to our city attorney.
Thank you, Councilman, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is actually a corrective ordinance. You will recall that this ordinance came before you on April 9th, and in it, the CMR incorrectly stated that it was going to be for victim witness. It actually needed to be corrected to say it was going to be for Operation Ceasefire, which is a separate and distinct program for victim witness. So this was just to clarify and accurately record-keep the fact that these funds would be for the Operation Ceasefire Program. It was submitted by the Honorable Stephanie Morales for consideration, and her office will be the ones managing those funds.
And I guess my question is, Operation Ceasefire, is that going to be, who's going to administer that? The police department, sheriff's department, or the court system, or?
Unfortunately, that is the extent of my assistance to counsel on this. Someone from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office would need to be here to discuss that. I don't see anyone here present.
I think it would be good enlightenment, as much as crime has been the number-one topic and number-one concern in our city.
Yes, sir.
If we could, at the next meeting, perhaps at a public work session, have someone to come and let us know how this money is going to be used to make our city safer, and which department's going to have ultimate responsibility prioritized, and where this money is going to be spent. I think that would be most beneficial to council, as well as to the public.[791.01][791.01](MUTTERING). Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, and thank you, Mr. Moody. So we do have a motion and a second. We've had a discussion. I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-109. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance accepting Virginia Homeless Solutions Program funds in the amount of $5,000, and appropriated said amount in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide homeless service resources.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-110. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance accepting additional auxiliary grant program funding in the amount of $130,000 from the Commonwealth of Virginia, and appropriated said amount in the FY 2024 Social Services Fund Budget to provide income supplements to certain individuals residing in assisted living facilities or adult foster homes.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, 24-111. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering at this time?
Resolution requesting approval of the Community-Based Corrections Plan Needs Assessment and Planning Study, and reimbursement for eligible acquisition, design, and construction expenses related to the Portsmouth City Jail Project.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item has been adopted 6-0.
I did. I was going to ask you about that. Yeah, okay. Mm-hmm. That's what I was going to ask you. Perfect, thank you.[946.13][946.13](MUTTERING).
Moving right along, our next agenda item is new business. Item 24-112, boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Our appointments to boards and commissions are in-house. We have the appointment of our new city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, to our Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, our Community Policy and Management Team, Transportation District Commission of HR, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Newport Development Authority, and the Regional Broadband Authority as a member. Our next appointments are the Board of Building Codes Appeal. We have no appointments. Our Board of Zoning Appeals, we have Darrell Wood and Andre Williams. Our Clean Community Commission, we have Sinise Johnson. Community Criminal Justice Board, Alejandro Torres. The Community Policy and Management Team, no appointments this time. Our New Crime and Gun Violence Prevention Task Force, we have James Cullen, Jalen Drury, Latisha Sesams, Sarah Ray, Eugene Swenson, Roger Smith, Sheree Patillo, Keith Rice, and Sherman Tyler.[1062.58][1062.58](APPLAUSE). Our Downtown Design Committee, we are having Christopher Crowder to remain appointed. Our Economic Development Authority, Joe Harmon. Our History Commission, Jason Romine. Our Historic Preservation Commission, we have Vincil Bryant, Thomas Butt, and Edwin Dagdugan. On our Library Board, we have Cindy Earl. Museum of Fine Arts Commission, Giovanna Juergens, Doris Shelton, Kiara Underwood. Our Southampton Roads Disability Service Board, we have Kenyatta Hardy. Our Todd Water Youth Services Commission, Alejandro Torres. And those are all the appointments we have for tonight, and I congratulate those members who have been recommended for appointing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Is there any additional discussion on the appointments? Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So for some of these boards and commissions, the members have resigned and we're replacing them, but for some of these boards and commissions, the members are being moved off because of attendance issues. And I want to confirm that the city clerk will notify everyone that's being moved off. So we're not only notifying the people that we're putting on, but I want to make sure that the people who are being moved off because of attendance issues know what's going on.
Correct.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you please vote electronically?
This item has been adopted 6-0.
Before we move into items, Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor. You have pushed the button. Do you want to speak, sir?[1208.66][1208.66](MUTTERING). But before we move into items submitted by council, the Vice Mayor does have a presentation that she wants to bring forward. So, madam, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. During my presentation, my announcement and introduction of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter, I failed to bring up our chapter president to give her remarks, so if my council will yield to allow me to have her to come now to make that presentation.
You have the floor, ma'am.
To the Honorable Mayor Shannon Glover, whose daughter is a proud member of our sorority, to Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke, and to the members of the Portsmouth City Council, good evening. I am B. Lisa Downey Hood, President of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, and it is with great pleasure I bring you greetings on behalf of our 245-plus members, a few that are here tonight. We are delighted to be with you as we acknowledge the importance of active participation in our local government, advocating for policies that strengthen and enhance our communities and our citizens. We applaud each of you for your hard work towards reaching these goals. We know and understand that this is not an easy job. Each year, the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter outlines its legislative issues, which align with our national legislative priorities, and focus on areas of concern and community impact. These items include voting and civil engagement, reproductive justice, education, economic justice, environmental justice, health equity, reimagining public safety, and honoring our beloved Shirley Chisholm. So what do we stand for? I'm so glad you asked. We stand for health equity, to ensure that the color of our skin does not determine the timeliness or quality of our care. We stand for reproductive justice, because it is we that must shape the policies that affect our bodies and our choices. We stand for education as a priority for our students. Investing in our students today will reap the benefits of a strong workforce, engaged citizenry, and productive citizens for tomorrow. And let me pause and tell you thank you for the work that you have done with our school board to fully budget and invest for our students. That deserves an applause.[1366.51][1366.51](APPLAUSE). We stand for economic justice, because resources and opportunities are the cornerstone of a just and prosperous society. We stand for environmental justice, to support community-based solutions to improve access to healthy, affordable foods in our local market, surplus in food-sharing programs, and food pantries. We stand for environmental justice, because our community should never buckle under the weight of others' waste and neglect. We stand for reimagining public safety, which is not just about gun control and policing. We understand that there are root causes far more complex than the systems that arise from these situations. We also know that this is a multifaceted issue that will require engagement from all of us to mitigate the violence in our streets effectively. We need you. We need us. We need each of us to be engaged and intimately concerned about the public safety in the city of Portsmouth. We need strong leadership aligned with a focus and vision to aggressively, not passively, manage every aspect of public safety from a proactive, not just a reactive stance. Again, let me applaud you for hearing the voices of the citizens and creating the commission to move forward. Real public safety comes from a dramatic investment in the critical resources addressing the root trauma, economic insecurity, disparities in educational opportunities, homelessness, and addiction. We stand for our voting rights, because discriminatory practices designed to suppress minority votes remains a stark reality in modern democracy, challenging the very foundation with equitable representation stands. As an organization concerned about voting rights for all citizens, the connection between voting and redistricting has become apparent in the past few years. Our chapter is engaged and educates the community year-round on voting rights, voting access, voting engagement, because we must continue to educate every citizen on the power of their vote. Make no mistake, we're not new to this. We're true to this. Social action is who we are and what we do as members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. For over 80 years, Portsmouth Alumni Chapter has answered the call for justice, using our influence to help promote programs and initiatives that educate and uplift our communities. As we continue to live out our legislative agenda through advocacy and efforts at the national, state, regional, and local levels, we are reminded that our work is far from finished. It is fitting, then, that we look forward to continue our engagement with the members of this council and the citizens of Portsmouth, as we work collectively to ensure a better tomorrow. Thank you.[1541.16][1541.16](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Vice Mayor, did you have any other items?
Just have all of the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated to stand, whether you're in Portsmouth Alumni Chapter or other chapters.[1559.35][1559.35](APPLAUSE). And I and Dr. Patton are also members of this illustrious sorority.
Thank you once again, ma'am. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
We're under items submitted by council, sir. As you know, last meeting, I mentioned, I mentioned about the Summer Raise Program, about making that free to all citizens. And the reason why I brought that up is because I seen that, we're all children, I'm sorry, I seen that we were giving money to nonprofit organizations and different programs around the city, and I figured that it would be best if we made an investment into our children before we invest into other programs. After speaking with staff, the city manager and staff, it was determined that the full cost of this for 400 children would be $115,600. Currently, we're allocating $20,340, which would mean we would need $95,260 to give all our children who sign up for our summer program, free summer camp. With that being said, I want to ask, I'm sure we have to get a consensus, but I would like to ask the city manager to look into the CDBG funds and find that other $95,000 to fund free summer camp for all children in the city of Portsmouth. And I'm not just talking about just the low income, I'm talking about anybody who signs up for this summer camp that we have in the city, the Summer Raise Program.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. The amount that you stated, that will fund 400 children, not all children.
Four, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have to...
400 children, which is the capacity that they can have for the Summer Raise Program. I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
And we will need a consensus on that.
Thank you. And he said he'll bring that back. Are you going to bring that information back? Is that what the request was?
No.
To see if the CDBG funds?
No.
Okay. It's in the report back?
You just need to know if that's what the...
Okay.
I'm sorry. We just need to know if that's what the desire of the council is.
Very good. So the colleague has asked for a consensus to fund 400 children in our Summer Raise Program at the cost of?
100.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor, but go ahead and say what the cost is.
$115,600.
Okay. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, actually, I was raising my hand for consensus, but since you've called on me, I think my colleague mentioned all children, not...
Correct.
You weren't talking about capping it at 400.
What, no, from talking with staff, only 400 is the capacity that they can take in all of the rec centers.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so this is for 400 children that they can take. That's the sweet spot. If they go over, they might not have enough staff or enough room.
So we're calling for the consensus, as reported, to fund the 400 children, which is the capacity. Please show consensus by raising a hand.[1786.13][1786.13](MUTTERING). Thank you. Are there any other items submitted by council? Councilman Tillis, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um...
Thank you, Mayor. This past Saturday, we had the opportunity, myself and many members of council, had the opportunity to participate in the Great American Cleanup. We were able to partner with civic leagues and neighborhoods from all across the city. It was great to see roughly 100 citizens come out throughout the city to help participate in making sure our community is clean and, as the motto, the slogan on the sign said, "Keep Portsmouth Beautiful." So I just want to take my hat off to our city staff with our Waste Management Department, as well as Mrs. Elvira Johnson-Williams, who helped to bring this all together, and also Vera's Casino, who helped play a big part in providing lunches to all of the volunteers. Also, this month is Autism Awareness Month. And so, you know, as we're going through this month, let's just remember the people, the individuals, as well as the families of people who have autism, and help us to help shine a light on bringing awareness and also an understanding to those individuals and to make our communities more inclusive. In addition, today is National School Bus Driver Day. And so I just want to take my hat off to every single bus driver all across the nation, but particularly, particularly the bus drivers of Portsmouth Public Schools. In my other life, I was a bus driver during my time in college. And so I know firsthand how getting up at 0:30 in the morning and not going to bed until late at night, making sure we transport our precious cargo to and from school. I just want to thank them because I don't think they get enough thanks. And so if we all can just join in just thanking our bus drivers, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Tillage. And right now, I will turn the floor over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Tillage, for pointing out autism awareness. As a parent of a child of autism, I can't thank you all enough for recognizing that. And also, a big part of it is just acceptance. My son is in Portsmouth Public Schools, and he has had the time of his life. I want to thank all the teachers that have been amazing assets. You don't get enough thanks. I know I drive you all crazy when I come up there, to those who are watching. And I want to thank this council for providing the funding that allows for those services to be provided to those children in need. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Are there any other items to be submitted by council at this time? Seeing none, I just want to add to what Councilman Tillage said. You know, when the citizens participate in activities that keep our city safe, beautiful, and all the other things that we desire to see our city, I think that demonstrates the best of community service. When people unselfishly show up and they work tirelessly, I saw so many of them working hard and going places that some of us probably wouldn't go. That's what community is all about. And we talk about the Portsmouth family and taking care of one another. We need to do more of that. To the words of Madam President, who just spoke on behalf of the sorority, we all can do better, and we must do better to improve our community. We need to continue to work together to make our city the best place to live, work, play, and raise a family. And thank you all for your service to our community. Moving right along, okay, Councilman Barnes, sorry. You have the floor, sir. Moving right along to...
Oh, no, no, no. No, I was saying I just pushed. That's why you didn't see it. I didn't want to talk though.
Okay, go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
I'm not going to be long because my colleague right here looking at me. But last week, I mentioned about a summer jobs program for our youth. And I just wanted to get a couple of questions. With those 400 children that we're going to be getting, my question would be, along with the staff that we have, if we were to start a summer program, how many, for children, how many employees would we need for the children to help staff that? What would be the market pay? And I propose that if we were to do something, it would be from ages 16 to 21. But my other question was, what's the youngest that we could hire? 16? So a program of 16 to 21, and just those other questions. If you could, I know we're going to be getting into the finalizing the budget, so hopefully we can get that pretty soon.
Mr. Carter, sir, do you want the floor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barnes, we have to do some research on this. I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we'll do some research and get that information back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Does that conclude our items submitted by council? Thank you all. Moving right along on our agenda, item 21-115, non, well, no, report on pending items. Mr. Carter, sir, did you have any pending items you wanted to speak to, sir?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Some items that were requested previously, you should already have sent out to you by the interim city manager, so that you have a report back on some of the things that you are looking for. If there's information that you think you don't have or haven't completely answered your questions, please let us know, and we'll provide that information to you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Moving to our next agenda item, which is item 21-115, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement at this time?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker for tonight is Blair Vernon. Blair Vernon, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello. My name is Blair Nicole Vernon. My address, I don't want to fully give it, but I live on Cedar Lane. It's pretty busy where the school zone is at. Thank you for hearing me out tonight. First thing I would like to say is I am sensitive. My ears are sensitive. I'm pretty sensitive, hypersensitive. So there's a little bit of complaints. I was asking because like 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, they do the little trash thing near your shopping center where I live. I hear the noise and it kind of wakes me up. I don't, I just want it to like die down a little bit because I'm sensitive, again, I'm really sensitive to hearing. Also, I was happy to see the event cross the street over there on Cedar Lane, like near the China League. And I was like, okay, we have something going on because normally we don't have anything going on but like soccer or whatever. But it was a little loud. But I wanted to know if y'all asked, if, do you ask the residents or let them know if anything's about to pop off so we'd be prepared for any noise or anything, you know? Do y'all like notify the neighbors in the neighborhood? I just wanted to understand how do y'all go about that? I was asking about that. All right. But I was glad to see people come together. It's not a chaotic thing. All right, next. Tennis court. It's like been dear to my heart. I was wondering if we can have a fundraiser to raise some money. I know it's always about money, but like to repay the tennis court or make it into a pickleball court, like couple courts. And since y'all doing a park and recreational thing with the kids, that would be awesome if they can use it a year or within another two years. But I was wondering if they could build a wall, a self-hit wall, like they used to have at Booger T. Washington, for people who don't like to play with people because we have loners or, you know, like we have six courts. And I know I only have three minutes, but the last one is the Virginia employment. Going on the website, I had difficulty, and I'm a little slow learner. But unfortunately, I possibly, unfortunately, I lost my job. So I wanted to see if, this is a last resort, if I could possibly receive anything for lost wages for the past couple of months. I've been looking for a job for the past couple of months on my own, off and on. So I was wondering if there's any place where we could go and get possible help for that situation. And that is, I called, I have put in online, I put in ID, I put in my driver's license. So if anybody could assist me on that, I would appreciate it. I think I'm losing my hair behind that. So that is it. And thank you for hearing me out tonight. Also, I'm a little hypersensitive, but I'm going to say this, I'm telepathic. So I can't, I'm sensitive hearing other people talk. All right. I know people think I'm, you didn't hear that too much, but I am somebody who is special, special needs. So I'm asking y'all if I can have any help possible, you know, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Mayor, I was going to suggest that a member of staff get with Ms. Vernon to give her some direction, especially on the unemployment situation. She did bring up some good ideas. On the tennis courts, I thought we had repaved those. Of course, time flies. That may have been five years ago. But my request would be for Parks and Rec to check them out and make sure they're in playable condition. And her suggestion on pickleball, I'm surprised we haven't had that before. That's a, that's a great suggestion. I haven't played it, but a lot of people apparently are playing it. So maybe Parks and Rec can look into that. I see a lot of vacant tennis courts around, so maybe some of them can be converted to pickleball. Thank you.
And Ms. Vernon, there may be some resources that we can put you in touch with. I talked to the city manager. If you could just stay after the meeting is over and we can get some information from you, that would be helpful, okay? Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammonds, if you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
My name is Leon Hammonds. I live on Bowie Court. Good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, council, and the new city manager. I don't know how long I can be here, but good evening. I only speak when I have something to say. I've learned years ago, 60 years ago, really, in I.C. Norcom, my teacher put up on the board, "The best remain silent and throw food, then the speaker move all dope." So that's why I don't talk that much. Two councilmen in earlier meetings asked for a report on the gift cards. Now, as far as I know, the report has not been returned. Okay. It was either no report or glossed over. Now, that's federal funds. I would like to just follow up on it. If I had to go to the Freedom Information Act to find out, I can do that, too. But I'm concerned about how many gift cards, if any, are still remaining. Could it be two years soon? And who all got the $500? Not particular name, but what pay grade got the $500 gift cards? I, myself, I don't, it doesn't make any difference, but the public needs to know. So I know the new city manager, it's in your lap. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Our next speaker is Sherman Tyler. Mr. Tyler, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Hello, Sherman Tyler, 1812 Parker Avenue, Portsmouth. I'd like to first start off by thanking my neighbor for coming out. This man right here, he's about a good worker in the community. He's just one of the best on my street, and I'm grateful for him. God bless you, brother. Also, I would like to tell the city manager, glad to see you here. Welcome to our city of Portsmouth. And we're asking you to hit the ground and run because, brother, we need you. Yeah. Our kids are dying at a rapid rate. My niece just got killed April the 2nd, leaving her mom's house, got into a car, got to the corner of Portsmouth Boulevard and Carver Drive, got killed. And since her death, we had five more deaths in this month since her death, you know? And, you know, we talk about so much other stuff when we come to this city council meeting, but nobody wanted to discuss what we need to be discussing. How can we save our kids? You know, the police officer, I seen them actually knocking on people's doors. I seen people, did your Ring camera pick up any footage to solve murders because there's no street cameras on these high-crime areas, you know? So our kids, you know, when they get murdered, they're, to solve that, it's based upon somebody Ring camera catching it and not on the city, which it should be. There should be cameras. Two people have got killed on that same street that my niece got killed on, you know? Why is no cameras on that street? Why? Why is it that Dale's Home got all them bodies in the last four years, I mean, on this watch? Dale's Home claimed 40, probably 30 to 40 murders. That's all Dale's Home alone. And y'all say that you're short in police? Well, how about putting some private security out there? You got to give the people something. Cocked kids dying. You got to do something. We just can't sit here and continue to talk about high street and talk about putting $22 million on concrete and grass, but we never discussing how can we stop this killing? We got 100, and once again, I say this every month, we got 165 deaths on the books right now unsolved. And for this year, I think we at 18, you know, which five of them 18 came in the month of April alone. So I beg y'all, I know y'all want to, you know, invest in Portsmouth, and y'all want to bring Portsmouth up, but what's the use of building all this nice stuff? And we got blood on our streets because our children continually dying, and nobody want to address that. It got to be addressed. We got to save our kids. Invest some of that money y'all talking about. Put that... Put that money on our kids, on cameras where you know you shorting cops and the cops can't be everywhere. Put cameras. A lot of these, these murders would have been solved if there was cameras in right, in certain places. And, and even with my niece death, the officers actually going knocking on doors, hey, you got, you got footage, you know? And we are swamping all our police chief. We got one of the best police chiefs in the world. But if y'all don't implement nothing, he can't do nothing. He don't have a power to put them streets, them, them cameras there. Y'all do, you know? And it's unfair for them to get him up here and let these people rip him apart because the leaders ain't doing their job. We got, we got Commonwealth attorneys dropping these cases like this. These mothers and fathers have to go in Walmart and different places and see the murderer of their kids because our Commonwealth attorney is not, I'm, I'm just gonna say it, not competent enough to turn over a discovery at the right time or a speeded trial. And these people gotta go and watch the murder of their kids walking scot-free. Man, this city, man, we need help. We need help. We shouldn't be talking about no buildings, building no nothing. We should address this killing. Six deaths in April, all young black, shot down like dogs in the street. And we've been going through this for the last four years. This is the worst four years in our city's history. You do your homework and I guarantee you'll find out. This is the worst four we ever had. So, sir, we need you to stop this crime.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I, I agree with everything Mr. Tyler said, but I can tell you that, um, Mr. Carter, me and him had discussions about this crime issue in this city. So he's well aware, um, I feel confident that he's gonna be a, a part of the process of making it better. But it's not just him. It's gonna take this council, it's gonna take the citizens, it's gonna take parents, it's gonna take nonprofit organizations, it's gonna take everybody to get it done. We can't just put it on him. We can't just put it on the people. We all gonna have to come together and do that. And I'm, and he, like I said, he's well aware, we, we've had this conversation probably three or four times, three times before he got here and just one time probably hour ago. So, um, he, he's, I believe he's gonna, um, make sure and do the right thing to help us out. And like I said, we all gotta be a part of the process. To Mr. Carter, um, and, and I know you're gonna have to do this in a report back or something. We, we had a, a program early on with Ring cameras. I'm not sure where we are on that, if we're still implementing that or is that still, even still a program? If you can look into that, um...
Please, please ma'am, please, please refrain from our burst. Please. Thank you.
That was all, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor. And, uh, Mr. Tyler, thank you for your vigilance. Thank you for always coming and reminding us of what we need to stay focused on. I would like to add and, um, offer to Mr. Carter, our president pro tempore of the Virginia Senate, who is also Chair of Finance and Appropriations, Senator Lucas put in a budget amendment, Senate Bill 30, that was approved on the floor this year for $3,500,000 to be allocated in fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026. And this is the idea that she had, this set aside for. So if, um, that's something you want to look in with the members of the Virginia General Assembly, specifically Senator Lucas, who put in this budget amendment for this funding specifically for Portsmouth, then, um, that would be some funding that could be helped with some streetlights, some, some cameras or whatever it is, even with our crime commission. Once that's put in place and put forth, I think we need to get some smart, concerned, engaged citizens who are gonna do the right thing with this funding and finally help Portsmouth to turn the corner on the crime and the violence that's been occurring in our community. We also have a representative as a contact, Mr. Alex DePaula, who received some funding, um, through these similar programs. And he's been, um, at the Museum of Arts this week, uh, making a presentation. And he was at Norfolk State University earlier, um, in the year, also making a presentation. So we have contacts out there for violence interrupters who would come on board and who wants to help us to identify how, uh, these funds can be allocated and how, uh, we can finally address. So we know it's not gonna be fixed overnight, uh, Mr. Tyler, but we're gonna keep hearing you and we're gonna keep hearing, uh, Mr. Cecil that comes down, Cedric that comes down as well. But, um, there is some help out there. We just need to point our heads and our hands in the right direction to make sure that it is utilized.
Our next speaker is Dr. Dotson.
Hi, Bill Dotson, Box 3269 Portsmouth, Virginia. Mr. Barnes, I believe that program you're talking about is implemented by the police. Force, the camp, the Ring Camera Program, not the council, if I remember correctly. Anyway, um, I'm here tonight to talk about growth. And the first thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Carter, I feel like we waited a long time for you. A very long time. We need help. Thank you for coming. The monarch butterfly is about to go extinct in the United States. There used to be millions of them that flew across the middle of the United States that changed the weather when they came through. There was community involvement with them. A swarm, a swarm of those butterflies is called a kaleidoscope. We used to call it a swarm, now it's called a kaleidoscope for a good reason. Those butterflies needed nourishment and that environment has almost been wiped out across the United States. That environment consisted of this plant right here, the milkweed. Many of you have it around your house, but you've mowed it down. You've taken it away and the nourishment for that butterfly is gone now. Thus, the population of the monarch butterfly is depleting. This plant also needs nourishment too. We need to know it needs to have air, water, soil and sunlight for it to grow. Just as the citizens who participate in our swarm of a city need nourishment too for our city to grow. Our city is on a downward spiral and it's, I know everybody wants to see it turning around, but we're failing to see some action to make that happen. I hope, Mr. Carter, that you're here to implement some of those actions. The city needs nourishment and one of the things we need is information. The big point of information that many of us need is to be able to see the budget. I'm so glad that this year you guys are working hard on the budget and examining it to see what's in detail, but we need more detail in that budget. I come from a city who has worked very closely with the County of Gloucester on their budget for many years and we could see down to pencils being purchased in the budget. And it was very easy to do because each department implemented that budget. It wasn't on the burden of the, of the financial department to publish it. It would be so nice to see it. What I'm shocked though by is that you passed a budget for the schools with no detail, with no information, and we as citizens still don't have access to that budget. We can go back a year and we still don't have access to their expenses. I believe we can go back two years if I'm not correct and we still don't have access to their expenses online. I'm sure we could, we could specifically request it, but that information needs to be readily available for us to nourish the citizens so they can examine it and understand. I get questions when I go to the civic leagues now that I think, why? We could go online, if we were online, to see some of this information. I'd love to see the citizens of, of the city have the information they need rather than the reckless environment that we have of social media that pollutes the information out there, that tarnishes the reputation of our city. I'd like to see us swarm back to the kaleidoscope of the, of the monarchs. This plant's available for home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mike Fink. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address.
I'm not intoxicated, I've just taken some medication. But here we go, let's start. My name is Michael R. Fink. I live at 4749 Rivershore Road. I'd like to thank the mayor for having me, also the city council, city councilwoman, and also, uh, Mr. Carter. I'm sure in the future we'll probably be talking. But anyway, I have some concerns and my concerns are, uh, we had a meeting in this facility, in this room, and I believe a lot of these young women behind me with their red jackets on, they were here. It appeared to be one of our city council persons, and I'm not gonna say her name, lost her temper and she used the, uh, the FU word. And she said it more than once. And then our mayor helped her leave and take her through one of these doors back here. She came back fifteen minutes later and she apologized. You know, that's, that's, that's a start, uh, but she, she did apologize for that. But in the same sentence, she said that she has dirt on the council people that, uh, what they were doing. Now, I didn't make that up, you can go back and find the tape, but she has dirt on them and, uh, they're selling votes. My question is, I'd like to know what votes they were selling. So that's the first thing. I didn't make any of that up, so you can go back and double check it, fact check it. I also like to know who hires and fires around here. It says that our city manager, intern city manager was only gonna be here for one month. She's got an awful lot of money, which that's fine, that's somebody else's money. It ain't mine, it come out of my pocket. But, uh, she, she gets a lot of money. Are we gonna have two city managers here or are we gonna have one? And when will the one that's not gonna be here leave? And the reason why I say is, you, you lost a lot of good people in the last couple of weeks. You weren't here. She cleaned house, well, she did, and, uh, she didn't know these people. She ain't been here but, but a month, but she knew them when she was previously here and then had to leave. But anyway, I'd like to know who's gonna be doing the hiring and firing up here? Will it be her? Will she knock on your door or will it be you, sir? That's what I'm asking. The other thing is, uh, I've got this super sucker truck in my front yard. I live at that end of the street. It runs probably, uh, I, I would say good eight, eight, eight to nine hours a day. It appears to be we have a problem with our sewer system. I'm sure you'll find out about it for long. But in Churchill, at the dead end, it's got a tilt to the road. All the sewer in the, uh, goes downhill, it don't go uphill. So when it runs down from fifteen houses downhill, that's where they start pumping from. They have two tanks there. I was told that they weren't put in properly and I don't know who did and I don't know if you paid them or not. I'll be curious to know if you paid somebody to do something because always, when I got paid, I didn't write. If I didn't, I didn't charge you. I had one other question. They have a company called Moon, M-O-O-N, that pumps this sewer for our city of Portsmouth. I would say they probably got ten trucks. I'd say each one of the trucks $200,000. They are working for the city of Portsmouth. They are going to all the neighborhoods and pumping the sewer out of the pipes and they're letting them run when they do it. And then they come back over here by, uh, the mall over here in the back part, by the interstate and then they dump all the waste into the main pipe. This, this didn't start today and it didn't start yesterday and it sure didn't start this year. It's been going on for a right good while. I'd like to know, did they put that contract on bid for, for the Moon people? And if they, if they didn't, it should go on bid. If Dr. Whitaker's here, he would tell you it should be on bid. Anything over $5,000, you're supposed to get a bid. But so, somebody's paying these people an awful lot of money for them trucks. And I would say it's in the thousands each week. It ain't hundreds, it's thousands. So if you could look into that, I appreciate it. And, uh, I didn't mean to upset you or anything, but anyway, uh, I would, I would suggest, or it'd be nice if you could meet with about fifty citizens in the city of Portsmouth and, uh, maybe you sit down and talk to them and they, you could, you could pick their brain. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I would like to welcome, uh, our new city manager and thank everyone for listening to the previous talker. When he spoke about something that I was gonna mention, but I won't even touch that 'cause I have videos of that and I had that same question that he just addressed that you heard. But I'm gonna do the public awareness about, um, my son and I want to do a campaign and we need the community to get involved to make it happen. And how we want to do, we put it on the website and it's TWCMADonline.com. Everything that I talk about in this city's council is written on the website for people to get on one accord, including our leaders and the citizens. It says, "What makes a community the, the business, the churches and the resident of all race?" And when you see my logo, it has an umbrella and it has three dots, which represent the shape of a raindrop. And the umbrella is like a shield to us all over the world. We are all addressing different issues and the similar issues throughout the United States. Today, I sat in a meeting to listen to the president and vice president to address different issues that we had spoke about. And the public awareness is gonna be about, um, our health issues, our environmental issues with the EPA and environmental justice and DEQ that I work with in different areas. Also, we're gonna be talking about public awareness of getting man ministries and different churches to get involved because we're gonna be having different activities that can get the youth. I know for a fact, a lot of churches don't have young people, but some do. And I'm asking for everyone that's listening to me today that we want to dress like we used to do, that Mr. Moody's aware of that idea, community awareness about having plays, um, singing, different fashion shows, just something to get the people involved in doing things together. I also want to ask the seniors that are listening to interact with our young people because we can learn things from them and they learn from us. Because there's a lot of knowledge that the older people can talk to the young, but it's things that they can teach us today. Because of the technology they have, I'm one of them, I'm guilty. I have to rely on my son to do my website, to do everything that you read on TWCMADonline.com. Also, we are doing different things of public awareness about Virgin Arts, which is VA. We are asking people to support us in getting involved in that and we're gonna help the youth, the seniors, the homeless and different others that way we will sit down and talk to people. You have to earn the opportunity that you want in life. If you don't want to help yourself, then we can't help you. We can only pray that God will help you. Now, the other thing I want to say, the climate change is affecting us and a lot of people need to take it very serious. The water study rising in my area, when I have heavy rain from the 2016 flood and the damage hit my home, it comes from Hanson, Grand and the water runs to, continue to wash because the damage that was done, it was never done by FEMA nor the city or the church. I have worked with different environment and different other things for us to flood in Southampton. I have videos, I know the rules and guidelines. I'm praying that someone come and talk to me about what they can do. And I did talk to FEMA. And I did talk to FEMA, and I'm gonna just say this, and they, uh-
Please, please finish your thought, ma'am.
They asked me, because they still have my information, they asked me, uh, why did the FEMA inspector didn't take my pictures? Because I had pictures before the hurricane.
Ma'am, ma'am, you, you, you have, you have to wrap it up real quick.
I'm wrapping it up, ma'am, I appreciate you.
Okay.
And she wanted to know why they didn't take the pictures, and I told her I don't know. But in, in the pictures, I want to show, anyone that would take time, any of you want to look at the pictures I've been taking throughout the city and my home, please, set up a time, 'cause it's very important that we get things done correctly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Have a good day.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers for the evening. Is there any other business for the good of the order? Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, drive home safe, and stay healthy. Good night.